Common Council meeting to order, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda this evening is a temporary suspension of the rules of the common council. Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll move at this time to temporarily suspend the rules of the common council and the mayor. So that we can have this teleconference and allow us to use our electronic devices.
I'll second that.
The motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is reported department heads, staff and consultants. The first is a update on the Bryn property.
We take a roll call?
We need roll call.
Roll call.
Are we being recorded?
We are being recorded. Haley, could you take the role?
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevanik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Your mic is off. Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgarty.
Here.
Alderman Tedgarty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, we'll go back to the Bryn development update presentation. I'm not sure who is planning on leading that presentation. Sam, do you know?
I know Kip Golden is here with CR Structures and I'm not sure if caller three, if that is Molly Urban or Brett Hildebrand.
I don't believe so. I think they had a prior engagement, but I am here to answer any questions. I think a letter had gone out to everybody. As far as kind of giving everybody an update on the Bryn project. Still very excited to get this one going. It has taken us a little bit longer and obviously with getting the financial on board, it's come apparent that we are going to need some assistance. I certainly give them kudos for trying to get this done. And not coming directly at the beginning to try to ask for, but it's certainly something that we're going to be needing to, in order to push this thing forward. So we are working with staff and Sam and trying to get something that works for everybody, which I believe will be coming on the 21st meeting. Is that correct, Sam?
Yeah, so maybe I can just give a little bit more of a summary. So again, the development group has been working pretty diligently to try and make this package happen. It's kind of explained in the letter. They're moving forward in a lot of different fronts. They have kind of the bank commitment, if you will, contingent upon appraisal. They're looking at their pro forma slightly. They're working on some asbestos inspection for the upcoming demolition. They're in conversations with all sorts of utilities for some re-locates. So they're moving forward in a lot of different fronts. But as Kip kind of mentioned, it got to the point financially with the bank, when kind of looking at the overall pro forma or kind of their their budget, if you will, kind of moving forward and kind of just looking at the revenues against the expected expenditures. And I kind of had to explain this to a couple of different aldermen that had called is basically a bank would is requiring kind of on the front end somewhat of a conservative debt coverage ratio, if you will, or more revenues coming in than expenditures. So and oftentimes a project takes a while to stabilize. So that's where we potentially see, you know, TIP packages come in on a lot of different projects, as Kip had mentioned. You know, this development group certainly wanted to try and do this project without any type of incentive, but we are at this final push that we do feel that if the project is going to happen, there is a gap and that's kind of what TIP packages and and development agreements are really meant for with those types of performance incentive is to assist in those initial years to cover that that coverage ratio to really get that project stabilized, to assist the bank to lock in that finance. And so we really do feel that this project is moving forward in all sorts of different fronts. But what we wanted to do, I guess, and kind of under my direction with the development group and Kip is to kind of just come present this this memo as far as where we're at or where the development group is at and kind of allow the common council either to ask questions this evening or over the next two weeks and then hopefully to bring forward an actual development agreement that kind of touches base on that TIP package or the financial package moving forward. So again, we have had a lot of conversations with the development group, with finance to see how that whole thing works. We do feel confident that, you know, a Pago-style TIP or basically a TIP that is based upon the actual revenues coming in is a very conservative approach for the city of Manasha and a very low risk to do that type of project and the TIP is there. And we do feel that there's enough flexibility within the existing project plan that we would not need to go out for a project plan amendment. So I guess I'll leave it at that unless there's questions.
Do you have a question, Sam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sam, are we going to redraft an entire new agreement or are we amending the current agreement?
Our thought process was to amend the existing agreement. So we would come back, we would update kind of where we're at. Obviously, you know, we had in the original development agreement that started construction by the end of the year. We're getting a little tight there. There was another note, I believe by the end of October, that the demolition would be started. Clearly has not begun either on the private buildings that are out there, 7 Takla and 13 Main Street. And one of the, I guess, the reasons that has been explained to me by the development group, which do make perfectly good sense is one, the investment group and the developer want to make sure that the financing is locked in before they execute the acquisition of that and any more investment into that property. If the financing for some reason did fall through, they would be kind of locked in with this investment or this asset that they couldn't do much with. In addition, and maybe Kip can explain this a little bit better, but basically it is easier and more cost effective to come in, demo a building, dig up that foundation and just keep digging for the new foundation versus how it was preliminarily written in the development agreement to demo the building, backfill it, come back later and start the building. So again, kind of
Yeah, it's the same contractor that'll be demoing the buildings as well as starting the site work. So they'd start out all at the same time. I'm not sure why that was written that way from the prior developer, but this works better into our schedule.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor, did you have a question as well?
Yes. I'm a little disappointed with the timeline. September was supposed to be the gold dates and and we got some excuses about COVID and other things. And in the meantime, you know, as an alderman, I have to hear from people on the street that the developers are looking for money, they're looking for cash equity, they're looking for investors. And it's unfortunate that an alderman has to hear that on the street, especially when we have an agreement like this. Another thing, the taxpayers already got stuck with $129,000 to buy the bits and bites building from Mr. Kemp's. And that wasn't part of the agreement. So I hope I can get some confidence back in this project here because and we had the developers on a couple of weeks ago and everything seemed to be okay. But, you know, he'd step it away, we're stumbling. And it's difficult to to work with a group like this. And if it's the same group for the Banta building, I think we should put that one off for bids. And it's I hope I can restore my confidence in this and we'll see what the next agreement looks like. But certainly this body needs to be informed first and foremost and not just with COVID, COVID this, COVID that. And yeah, everything's good, but it's not good. So we need to help this body get behind this project and especially with the financing. That's what it's all about. We want to make sure we're on solid ground in footing, just as a contractor that builds this project. You make sure he builds a good foundation for the project. So let's try to restore some credibility here. Thank you.
Alderman Garty.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this question is for Kip or Sam, but I'll ask Sam. Is there any financial dates from anyone? Or are we requesting to get financing by a certain date here? Or are we at the helm of the banks? I don't know the process there. So can you enlighten us?
Yeah, I can give you some hacks up on that. We should have the appraisal here in the next week or so, which is a major thing. The investors are on board. They are being, the project is in underwriting with the Financial Institute. We are hope that that process takes about 30 days, so should be right after the first of the year. And as soon as that is completed, coincides with obviously the December 21st meeting with you guys. Our goal would be to be in the ground on the first or second week in January.
We're gonna put a little bit more of a buffer in there though, Kip, so we don't
I will, but that is my goal. I'm always gonna push. But obviously I know Sam's like, hey, you know, we want to, but again, that is our goal. We're trying to get this thing going as soon as we can. And without any hiccups on that side of it and with us working with Sam and staff on on that, on the other financial piece, I'm, again, I'm still very confident that we can get this thing going in January.
Okay, thanks for the update, Kip.
And just to kind of add to that a little bit. So again, we have, as these developers go through the stages of development, I guess, if you will, you know, they need to, you know, come up with certain packages, get certain plans to a certain stage to make sure the investment's online, to make sure they can go out for preliminary bid, to make sure their estimates are correct. So again, they have gone out for preliminary bid. It's my understanding, the construction documents are actually complete. They have kind of their bank locked in, provided they can, the appraisal comes back well. And then they're seeing this last little gap of kind of a little bit of instability for that first 10 years or so on the project while it kind of kicks off. So again, we will, within that development agreement, we're going to be working over the next two weeks to kind of draft all those deadlines in there. So that will be kind of noted in there. We'll update, you know, construction timelines. We'll kind of update all of that as well as how that payment works. So again, as I kind of stated earlier, this would be, you know, a Pago-style TIP, similar to what we've done with other projects. So again, certainly the incentive payment would not go out unless, you know, the project is complete.
Alderman Nichols, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, we're talking about TIP assistance that would come out of TIP 10, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yes. And in looking back through our annual TIP report, the expenditure period ends in seven years for that TIP roughly. And you just mentioned 10 years of assistance. So I'll help clarify how that will work.
Yep. So basically because we have an existing district, that district is kind of already proceeding into its life. It was created in 2006, I believe, June 5th of 2006. So again, we are already well into that life of that district. However, there is, we are permitted to have expenditures and to go past the expenditure period, provided there is a written development agreement. So I believe our last development agreement with Lake Shore Ridge Apartments on the far east side with TIP 12 was very, very similar to that. Because again, where we're at with the life of that district, it can extend beyond, provided we have that development agreement drafted. But again, we are not taking out any, you know, major debts on that. It's not a upfront cost. It is a Pago-style TIP. So again, very low risk from a municipality standpoint.
Thank you for that. And when you add the assistance to the developer plus the cost that we've committed to the stormwater project and the cost of assisting in the purchase of 13 Main, we, do you still feel confident that there is enough in that TIP to cover those costs?
Yeah. So again, we, there was, the district kind of laid out, Takla corridor redevelopment and housing rehabilitation. So again, looking at where the existing life is, in addition to the existing balance and that extrapolated or moved forward, we do feel confident that we can kind of make that, make that project happen. In addition to, the last amendment did kind of call out for, you know, the acquisition of that 13 Main Street that the developer would pay for, I believe it was like 60,000 of that, of that acquisition or how that transaction would work with the transition of property. So that was also called out for in that last, that first amendment to the development.
And my next question might be more for Director Alex. Have, do we have an anticipated cost for the stormwater project?
We have not bid that out yet and we're still in the process of finalizing the design. But I know that we expect that number to be considerably less than what was originally outlined in our stormwater action plan or management plan.
Did you want to comment as well?
Okay, when will you have?
I do have an email, Alderman Nichols into the engineer on that, just to firm up that number. There's some concerns with going through the bin wall along the canal. So that might add some complication, but I'm not anticipating it to be significant amounts of money.
Do you have an idea when we'll get a bid back for that?
A bid or an engineer's estimate?
Well, when will we know the cost?
Well, we wouldn't know the final cost for, I have an email to the engineer. Hopefully I get an answer this week as far as the engineer's estimate. The actual bid won't happen probably until all of the pieces and things fall in place to actually bid it out. We're probably looking a month or more away from an actual firm contract price.
If I can, I can jump in there, Alderman Nichols. So some of the difficulty with that stormwater and the project as a whole is that it is really a public-private partnership. So again, the timing of our bid needs to be laid out in the request for bid document. So we need to kind of firm up the construction timeline, firm up where they're kind of starting and finishing. And then to see, okay, what type of gap do we have to kind of fit into constructing our stormwater utility? Because it will not be after the project's completed and it likely will not be on the front end because we want to also make sure that, you know, the project is started and on its way, financially committed, and we're moving before we do that. So again, there's some conversations with the general manager, Kip Golden, CR Structures on that project to say, okay, once we kind of really get to that firmed up timeline as far as your construction, we need to see, okay, what the window is for you guys to put in your foundation. And then we need to look at, okay, what our window is to get to a contractor to put into our bid documents to say, this is the timeline that you have to start and finish your stormwater. So again, we're trying to align those stars as we move forward. And I think that's kind of where we're at, but we will certainly get.
So sticking to the timeline for just a second, I was the alderman who was very skeptical of the timeline put forward from the beginning. And a number of months ago, when the amendment for the assignment was brought forward, I was the one who suggested we might pause and make sure that we're on the right track with this, both from our perspective and the developer from their perspective. So this time, I really hope that we can, and strongly suggest that we sit down and really come up with a viable timeline that's realistic and works, is in the best interest of both parties, so that we can continue moving forward instead of having these hiccups. Secondly, back to the finances and the TIP. Is there a plan in place to consult with elders about the financial feasibility from the TIP for, from our perspective?
I'm seeing that this is an existing TIP district and we can do that analysis in-house and look at that project plan. We had not anticipated reaching out to elders to do any type of really financial analysis. We can touch base with them. We do do enough work with elders that they typically kind of will provide you know, some verbal guidance, if you will. But we would anticipate doing this review internally. There was, if we had to do an actual project plan amendment or there was a much more complex measure included with this TIP package or something else that was included with it, we probably would reach out to elders for that consideration. But at this time, we feel confident that we can handle that internally.
I'm fairly comfortable with a Pago situation, although I don't think it would hurt to have another set of eyes on it at this point in the game. And also, since we're here talking about this for the this is another time with this development, there were some more concrete provisions written into an agreement with this group between the RDA and YBR regarding the Bonta site. And in looking back through the protections on the original agreement for the Bryn site, while there is an opportunity for the city to buy the property back, once that transfer takes place, given this sort of stop and go that we've been experiencing with this site and the instability of the overall economy, I would very much like to see those stronger protections from the city's standpoint brought into this agreement as well.
I'll second that.
I can certainly discuss it with the development group. That is something, as it was explained to the RDA, is very, very unprecedented for any development group to throw out there. And I think the reason it took place with the Bonta building is because we were looking at an actual, we were looking at the actual sale of a building for a dollar. So I think that's why they agreed to throw in a little bit extra protection. Secondly, I don't know who owns the plans. You know, if we're contracting with the developer and let's say, let's say the developer doesn't own them, they're leasing, they're somehow leasing the plans from the architects and things of that nature, or have some or other agreements that would add to some complexity there. So again, I don't, I do not know the ins and outs of that agreement and I would be pressed to say that they would be not willing to do that. But again, we can have that conversation with them.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I too echo other Nichols' sentiments here. I think we need another group to look at this at this point, just to make sure that there's a good financial foundation here that we're standing on. And we were told that wasn't going to be any city dollars. And I'm wondering if if there's any portion, the city would have input on this project now that I know we're going to have some infrastructure coming through from Water Street and I don't know if that would be in on this TIP or not, this TIP stamp, Sam, or not.
I guess I would just follow up with that, that, you know, I think on the front end, you know, city staff as well as the town council have pushed a very high quality, high-value project here on this site. And we knew upfront that this development group, the original development group coming and saying they're going to do this project without any TIP incentive. And I've talked to some of my colleagues. And it was, it was an awe that they were even attempting to do that. And I would challenge the common council because I know where I would stand on this. If this project came to the city of Manasha at the time that it did and it asked for a Pago-style TIP before they put any funds into working on the project, any funds into construction documents, time into looking at the financing package, I would be in support of that TIP package at that time prior to them doing any type of work because I do think this is a very high-quality project. It's very good for the city of Manasha. And it will be the anchor for that side of the west side of downtown for many, many decades to come. So again, that, I would challenge the common council to say that, you know, we have some developers that come and ask for TIP incentive on the front end. And if a municipality doesn't give that or grant that on the front end, they're not even going to consider them as that. We have this group now that, you know, they have done everything that they could to try and get this project financially stable and still bring that high-quality project. And we're at the finish line and they're, you know, I'm sure it wasn't easy, you know, coming back on that word too and saying we do need some help here. And that's why I do feel very strongly that we should, we should, you know, work with them. Let's make this project happen. Let's let's move forward with it and get that project in there.
Saying that, Sam, you have to work with this council better on this project too. You know, you left us in a dark year. We missed timelines. And for COVID reasons, it was said, and you got to do a better job keeping this body informed on this project. And with the 13 Main, how did we, how did we get stuck with buying 13 Main? I thought that was supposed to be part of the agreement that the developers would buy 13 Main.
That was outlined in the first amendment to the development.
For what? For the developers to buy it?
We voted on that and that was the pass.
Again, things have changed. We did not, you know, the developer came, the original developer came to us in August, September and said, this project, it cannot financially work this. To see where we're at today, after assigning this project over in September, you know, it isn't off. We likely should have taken a step back, I think, with that development group and say, okay, are these timelines that were in the original agreement or in this amendment, are they really feasible? And I think if we would have done that at that time, we probably would have said, yeah, let's push some of those timelines back because we do need more time. We are, you know, a development group that's coming in on this project. But again, to kind of say that we've, you know, we haven't been forefront, you know, we have attempted to communicate. We, you know, we did the amendment. We did come a month ago, so two common council meetings ago. We knew we were going to have a communication today. We didn't know what that message was. I got this note regarding, you know, the TIP, the financing package last week. So again, we're trying to make sure we output the information that we know as soon as possible. And sometimes, again, we have to allow that developer to take their due diligence to figure stuff out as well. You know, to get an appraisal on the potential value of this building takes four to five weeks. So again, there's major timelines in there that we're waiting is also to provide an answer to the town council.
I thank you for that. But in the past, it was COVID-related and not financially related. Adam or Corey, what is the ballpark figure on this, on the
Off the top of my head, Alderman Taylor, I don't recall that. That's something I'd have to look into and try to get.
Was it about 2 million?
That was what was in.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes, what's your point of order?
The point of order is, is that Alderman Nick-
The point of order is is that Alderman Nichols already asked those questions and answers were already given.
Oh, they weren't.
Yes, they were. He's waiting for the engineering completion and that that number will come in yet this week. Yet you want a number. Let's move forward, please.
I asked for a ballpark figure. Was it around two million? That's all I asked.
And Corey said he doesn't have that number for you, but we will get that for you as soon as we have something that's more.
I've talked in the past to you about this. What is the ballpark figure on this?
I can tell you the same thing Corey said has came in less than what the McMahon study said, but I can't tell you a number. I don't remember what the numbers were either.
Over a million?
Maybe less.
Over a million?
Yes.
I don't remember what that number was.
And let me remind Alderman Severn tonight, he's interrupting me twice. I have the floor.
I had called the point of order and the mayor recognized me. So learn your parliamentary procedures.
Now you're interrupting me three times tonight.
If you guys can't fight nicely, neither one.
Actually, I still had the floor.
Here. I had the floor and he's interrupting me. He's done nothing about it tonight. So let's consult rules that we have, Mayor. I don't care if people don't like hard questions. That's too bad.
I like people that listen.
May I?
This is this is.
And I like answers.
So it this is Adam, just just so you're aware, in our stormwater action plan, we have budgeted like nine hundred and thirty two thousand for the Center Street Underground detention. So again, it depends upon what happens with us trying to go through that bin wall, which is what we're waiting on. So I would say a million to be safe.
Thank you.
Alderman Langdon's been waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I just want to make sure I have this right. So Ms. Molly Urban and Brett Kildebrandt from YBR Properties is different than the first group of developers, correct?
Yes.
So then my question is, why are we asking questions about the past and about the 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 past developers? Everything with them is irrelevant. And and this is a new developer and their where they're at is pretty damn good, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm with Sam. Let's go with this. I mean, questions were asked about the past developers. This is now. Thank you.
Sam, did you have anything else to add? Otherwise, we'll move on. No? Okay, thank you for coming tonight, Kip, and great questions. And we'll have something else on the next council meeting then. Director McKinney is up next. And.
To make me a presenter.
I'm working on it. It should be there now.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear an update about COVID nineteen and and how it's doing in our community. I just want to preface this by letting you know that this is this presentation is both the Manasha Joint School District Pandemic Plan and our regular weekly summary. So there's a combination here of strategies. I'm going to have to go back. Here we go. So our case counts as of yesterday were one thousand three hundred and eighty four laboratory confirmed cases. We have eighty one probable cases, which is people who are close contacts that have symptoms but haven't been tested or have received an antigen test. There are sixty five active cases, one thousand three hundred and eighty five recovered and six thousand two hundred and nineteen negative. We have a hospitalization that this is concerning that we see an increase in. So we have seventy eight hospitalized and fifteen fatalities. In the last two weeks, the confirmed cases decreased from one hundred and eighty one cases to a hundred and two cases. And then the case rate has decreased from one thousand thirty three point seven cases per one hundred thousand population to five hundred and eighty two point five cases per one hundred thousand population. So we've seen quite a decrease in the last two week period. Our activity level then was in the past critically high and it was critically high for a very long time. It's now classified as very high. And just to take you into a couple of our 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 look at our community, when we look at the Manasha Joint School District and advise them, we look at the surrounding area because Manasha Joint School District doesn't just include children from Manasha, but children from Appleton and Fox Crossing as well. And if you look at all of our classifications, we are all in the very high range. Wisconsin is in critically high range. We we did shrink over this last two week period, as I alluded to. So this is what our case rate trend and burden looks like for the last two weeks. And if I can point to the very beginning, actually, it should go off into April. We stayed flat pretty much through the summer and after holidays, we actually saw a little rise in cases. And then again, as we neared close to Labor Day, we saw the trajectory of cases just skyrocket. And over the last several weeks, we remained in this critically high red zone. We took a little bit of a drop to about twelve hundred per one hundred thousand population, then went up a little bit. And now in this last two week period, we've taken a significant drop down into the very high level. We still want to be, and you can't even see it because it's so low, but we want to be in this very light blue and almost light green area. And really, I mean, we're cautiously optimistic that we saw such a drop. So basically, so basically, our city case incidence right now is twenty five point three cases per one hundred thousand per day. And our goal is less than one. So we're still in the red zone here. And then we have seventeen point six percent as our daily test positivity rate and our goal is less than five. So we're in the red. And then our average number of tests per day, and all of you have looked at this with me over the last months. And we know our goal is twenty eight tests per day and we were as high as over fifty tests per day at some points in the last few weeks. We went down quite a bit during the last two week period, I suspect through the holidays when we didn't have the available community testing. Our testing went down to twenty two point eight. So the reason I'm a little cautiously optimistic to see the rate go down is that that's a very good thing. It could be because people have been very vigilant about smaller sizes of gatherings and making sure that they were careful over the Thanksgiving holiday. But it also could be that we haven't done as much testing in the last two weeks as we had previously. So our test positivity rate has gone down, although it's still considered in the red area or the red zone. Our disease investigators were able to contact all of our confirmed cases within twenty four hours. So we're in the green there. And then all of our close contacts are reached within forty eight hours. And our hospitals in the Fox Valley, there's about fifteen percent immediate bed availability, which means that there's about eighty five percent beds in use. So we watch that number carefully as well. So I wanted to share with you. Can we wait till the very end and then I'll take questions? So in the very December first, our status for cases per one hundred thousand per day is twenty five point three. We also do now in the last two week period, we have looked at the daily case rate, our seven day rolling rolling average for the surrounding area because we have metrics from the state now and we're still in the red zone, thirty four point three. Our testing again is in the red zone as far as positivity rate and our tests per day are in the yellow. So I'd like to see this back up. If we could get additional tests per day, that helps us to identify people who are positive for the disease, get them isolated, identify close contacts and get the close contacts quarantined. Again, we're in the green when it comes to our contact investigations. And we're looking at healthcare as having available beds. I wanted to share this with you because this is what we use for moving between learning models with the school district. It's actually designed from the Harvard model which uses their threshold for going all remote would be three hundred and fifty per one hundred thousand. And again, we're over five hundred cases per one hundred thousand, but we're coming down very nicely. And then we also look at that daily case incidence, which is over twenty five. And so that's where we're at. But in very short order, if we keep pushing these numbers down, there could be a possibility that we move back into different learning models. So I'm I'm very confident that the Manasha Joint School District does a great job with their distancing, their mask wearing, their disinfection, all of those things. But we do we do use this model for decision making. Our age group, just want to mention that I was a little concerned this past two weeks that the forty to forty nine year old age group was a little higher than we'd seen in the past. Again, we'll keep our eye on that and I'm not sure what the explanation is for that. And then, of course, keeping track of the over sixty group is also very important to us and doing everything we can to prevent more vulnerable populations, those over sixty five or those with underlying health conditions from contracting the virus. I do want to point you to where our data summaries are so that for our our viewer audience that people can look these up, we have gone back through July now with our weekly data summaries. And you can look at the most recent one on a weekly basis. We usually publish them on Thursdays. There's two of them we do. One is for the city and one is for the Manasha Joint School District Pandemic Resilient Plan and we work very closely with them. A couple of updates for you. There will be changes in the community testing sites. So keep your eye on the website for our community testing site. And then there have been some changes in close contacts for quarantine. We are looking at some other options that are might be a little bit easier for people to follow. One is a ten day quarantine period as and symptom monitoring. The other is looking at test plus a seven days plus making sure that we have a negative test result in place. The contact tracers will work with individuals on that. And it's all published on our website as well. And then some newer information about vaccines. This is really great news. I feel though as though we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I heard it described as we're at halftime right now. And we need to head toward the the end zone and this is going to help us a lot along the way. It will be a phased in approach. We have information, like I said, on our website, but just a few things. There are two vaccines right now that are seeking emergency use authorization. One is the Pfizer vaccine, which will be considered this week, December tenth, and the Moderna vaccine on December seventeenth. Both have claimed to be ninety plus percent effective. And the goal of our state is to make sure that we're efficient, we're safe, we're quick and we're equitable with these vaccine vaccines. There's an advisory committee on immunization practices and the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention that have heard a lot of testimony plus are looking very carefully at who should be vaccinated first. It will happen in phases. We're working very hard with our state, with our regional partners. We're entering very shortly, I'm sure we'll be entering into phase one A, which is our healthcare workers, both paid and unpaid, our long term care workers and residents, which is good. And then they'll be going into phase B, which would be essential workers and phase one C, which would be people that are sixty five or older with underlying health conditions. And this is going to take a while to roll out. If you can imagine the magnitude of having to move vaccines in and out of states and to different locales. It it will be, it's it's a heavy lift. We're all we're all confident that it can take place seamlessly and we'll work together and it will be happening concurrently. We're not going to be doing phases discreetly. So it's going to be a lot of work, but we're looking forward to it. Like I said, we're very pleased that we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. In addition, I just wanted to mention that the vaccinators will be healthcare systems, public health pharmacies. So we will be working very closely with our partners in making sure that we get good capacity for our Manasha residents and we have set up this webpage for information when it becomes available. So please take a look at it and and see what you think. In the meantime, I'd really like to encourage people to keep up the great work to really work on physical distancing, the masking, hand hygiene, making sure that the mass gatherings aren't happening. There's been a lot of advice from the state and recommendations that people sixty five and older should stay home and only go out for essential reasons. And I would agree with that. There is circulating virus and we want to be very careful. We want to see everybody on the other end of this pandemic. So that's what I have for you tonight. I heard somebody ask a question, but I'm wondering if it was answered.
You have to turn your mic back on, Mark, if you had a question.
I did have a question and as you kept going.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. And I answered my question also. So it was answered. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. You guys have been awfully supportive and I really appreciate it. Sometimes it's difficult to make these decisions and to make these recommendations. But I feel that we have really kept abreast of the science. I can't tell you, I don't think a day goes by that we don't look at the scientific literature and make sure that it's guiding our actions. So if you can keep encouraging people that the things we're recommending do work, they have science behind them. And there's reasons that we are making the decisions we are.
Well, great. Thanks for the update again tonight, Nancy. If people have questions, they're always free to give you a call or someone at the health department a call.
Please do. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on then to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman seven.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approved minutes A through G and communications H through K.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Did you have anything, Stan? No? James? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item G is public comments in any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight?
This is William Banti and my wife Joy Cha. We'd like to speak.
Sure, go ahead.
For those of us, for those that do not know us, we're the owners of Lemon Loves Lime and 192 Main Street. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council this evening. We're here to speak and share our opinion and views regarding the change to Title VII, Chapter Eight of the outdoor restaurant service that was introduced by Alderman Stan Sevenek. We're here tonight to fully support this change to the existing ordinance for several reasons. One, the change closes what we see as a loophole in the current ordinance. Two, we see this as a minor change that will allow for more pedestrian friendly flow of traffic down our main street sidewalks. Allowing safe and unobstructed passage with no tripping hazards and interference with public parked cars and those passengers exiting from those vehicles. Number three, the change will also prevent individuals from having to change their direction of travel, meaning trying to navigate around the obstacles on our sidewalks. And number four, we feel it will continue to maintain and project a positive image for downtown Manassia. It should also be noted that my wife and I are in favor of having outdoor seating since we right now have outdoor seating and our customers enjoy us providing it. Though we agree it should be allowed only to the length of the licensed business's designated address and that the area shall be adjacent to the edge of the building and at least five feet of any right of way sidewalk or public property. It also should be mentioned that the city of Manassia's current ordinance, even with these minor changes, is much less restrictive than the city of Ena's ordinance for outdoor service. They currently require the area to be either fenced, roped, or chained off and to be put on like a platform, meaning like padding set down. So it's raised from the existing sidewalk. And I believe that's to prevent any, anybody from hurting themselves, tripping. And to control alcohol being served in those, those areas, those public areas. We conclude that this, this change in effect will further help also in reducing the potential exposure of contracting COVID-19 by reducing the amount of tables and contact with people navigating our sidewalks. I wanted to thank everybody for allowing us to speak and we wish everybody a happy and safe holiday.
Is there anyone else who wishes? Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Hello, Sandra, the Bill Taylor 545 Broad Street. I will limit my comments to the redevelopment. I realize this property is essential for the well-being of the downtown and the city as a whole. But I have been skeptical of this development group since they took over in midsummer. There have been numerous delays and they have a very limited portfolio. They now are trying to come to the city to receive stipulations. I do want to remind the council, this is an economic opportunity zone with significant tax benefits for the investor. So they knew this coming in. They're looking to use the city as collateral to receive a loan. I just want to caution the council with this project. It's essential that the development doesn't hurt. But I'm really hopeful of the investors that are working on this project at this time. And I would like to encourage community development to take those cautions into consideration because they appear to be supporting the developer more than supporting the developer. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sam, I don't know if you're able to get in and put the, or Pam, put the agenda up. My computer has died on this end and I can't, I'm not a presenter unless I use the second computer. So we'll have to work on this mode unless we can get someone else who can set that up for us. There are six items on the consent agenda this evening. Does anyone wish to separate any of those items? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to the item three, item four. I think that's it unless council members have others.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to have anything separated?
Mayor, I did submit some corrections for the council minutes. Should I pull that out so we can talk about it?
If you, we can, yeah, we can do that. If there are anything substantial, if they're just typo type things, we can just make those changes.
I'll just mention what they are so everybody knows. I'll remove one.
Okay. Anything else? We have a motion for two, five and six. Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for approval of the budget review, the tentative agreement with the Manassia Professional Police Association Local 603, and the amendment to the employee handbook.
Did you get a second hopefully Haley? And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenek?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomcady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item one is the common council agenda from November 16th. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion in a second. The corrections that I noted with the clerk today are on page five. At the top of the page pertaining to the motion about legal services, the first motion, Mayor Marcus actually voted no on that. So I had that changed to break the tie. And then on page six, item number five, I asked that the Alderman be recorded as to which way they voted for that one.
If that's your motion, I'll, I agree to those. In fact, I saw those myself and was thinking about that. So.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the common council minutes from November 16th as corrected.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no one, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenek?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Schmidt?
I think that was I.
Yeah.
Alderman Tomcady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item three, the change order.
Yes. I'll make the motion to accept the change orders for Myron Construction Company, that's for the public works facility construction project in the addition of $31,528.23, change order number 14.
Is there a second? Not everyone all at once, please.
I think James did, but it, it, he went too fast. That's all. James made the second.
There's a motion.
I didn't make the second.
Okay, Alderman Tedcady made the second then. Any discussion?
Eric, can we, can we pull these change orders up?
These were the ones that were, were approved at the last meeting.
Yes. Can you pull those up?
I don't know if there's anything in there. Is there anything in there?
Otherwise I can sort of summarize them again.
Aye.
Yeah, the consent agenda, the items are not included.
There isn't anything there. Adam, would you like to summarize them?
I certainly can. So of that 31,528, one of them, $1,125,000 $1,125,000 was to move the interior gas piping because we energies needed to move the meter location. Then there was a deduct, an actual credit. We eliminated a window that was in conflict with the crane in the maintenance shop. However, we did add an interior window in the parts delivery room, but it's still netted in a deduct. Then we added $2,674.58 to move the heater vent location in the wash bay, that which required us to punch a new hole in the, in the ceiling. We were concerned with how close it was to the door rail plus the door operator that was originally called out. We wanted to make a change there. Then there is a $4,073 addition for ventilation duct work moving. There was some conflict with some exterior windows and obstructing some of the natural lighting in the vehicle storage. Then there's an add of $8,665.55 that was to extend the ceiling height in the wood shop. There again, the original plan called for a 10 foot high ceiling and we were concerned about that. So we requested it to be raised up to 16 feet. There's an add of $5,546.25 for some additional gravel and grading around the fuel island. There again, the fuel island was, is not part of the Myron contract per se. And that's a contract that we have with US Petroleum Equipment. However, the civil drawings and the rough grading did not take into consideration the, the, the pad that needed to be level for the, for the above ground fuel tank. So we had to bring in some additional gravel and grade that out. So we had Ostranga, who is the earthwork sub for this project, take care of that. Then there's the exterior door trim openings. That's an add of $13,532.98. There again, this was a cost saving measure that was written into the plans and the specs on the exterior doors where we cut through the precast panels was not to be trimmed out. Again, this was a cost saving measure at that time. We were unhappy with the appearance of several of those openings and requested those to be trimmed out. And we did like how it, how it looked and felt as though that would be in our best interest to trim out all the exterior doors. So that's what that 13,000 is. Then we have a deduct of $5,200. There were in the bid pricing, which still wasn't called out for, but the overhead door contractor was to provide or plan to provide door openers for the smaller eight by eight overhead doors, which were, were not needed. So we gained 5,200 there. And then the center I beam columns painting, when we removed the painting of the vehicle storage area in, in the very beginning, that was part of our value engineering savings. The ceiling and the I beams came out. And then when we came back and added the painting of the ceiling back in, in the vehicle storage, we did not identify the I beams. There again, when we were in there preparing for the punch list, we were not, we, we wanted them painted. So we requested that to be painted. That came in at $2,880. And that's the total of 31,528.23. And again, to be clear, this is not adding to our contract with Myron. This is coming out of the contingency fund that is built into their contract. And my experience, limited as it may be, it's obvious that, that we do run into things that are either missed or there's a misunderstanding when we were designing the building and writing the specs. And even though we were given a set of plans prior to the bidding, we did have an opportunity to sort of perhaps catch some of these things. But again, with my experience, as, as things sort of start coming together, you do notice things because it's, it's not on paper. As far as are, are we, are we experiencing more than, than we should on a project this size? That is something that I cannot answer for you. However, I did invite this evening, Kellen Miller from Myron and Mark Keating from Grease Architectural Group here. So if you guys have some specific questions, you certainly, they're here to answer those for you. But that's what makes up this 31,000. And we call it a change order because we wanted to keep you folks abreast of anything that, that we're doing out there and the use of this contingency fund that's out there. So.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On the working drawings, would that be under the architectural mistake that they put a heater vent too close to a garage door that's opening in the track? And also the duct work vent that that would be obstructing the windows? Isn't that pretty much kind of Trapman 101? And I'm just wondering why the, the taxpayer should eat those costs if it was probably the whoever drew up the plans. Either of the two contractors can.
Sorry, this is Ellen. I'm with Myron Construction as the project manager. Well, to answer your question quickly, we have a, the contingency fund is there because we know we're going to experience some of that stuff throughout the life of a project. That's just based on every year doing hundreds of projects similar to this where you have your design issues, you have your coordination issues, you have like Adam mentioned, opportunities to catch preferences and you have things that don't turn out in real life like they do on paper. So I mean, we have this contingency there for that reason alone. And I think Mark is on the line as well, but it's some of the, yes, it's a architectural miss, but some of it's also a coordination miss on Myron's part. And I think some of it's even misunderstanding what the clients, you and Adam and his team expected at the end of the day. So like I said, at the beginning of this, we have about 5% of the project total in a contingency fund. And if we don't use it, you get it back. But we have that there to provide a guaranteed maximum price that we do not go over for you. So we stay under budget and you end up getting the building that you want at the day. Hope that helps and answers your question.
No, really, yeah, because I don't think that the taxpayer should be on the hook for an error like that to come out, come out of our contingency planning, putting the heater vent too close to, I mean, you, you see the drawings are putting a vent in front of a window. And I just see that those were, you know, mistakes on the architect or whoever did the drawings and those costs should be absorbed by them.
This is, this is Mark Keating with Grease. Couple of things.
Uh, this is, uh, this is Mark Keating with Grease. Um, cou- couple of things, um, we, uh, well, the, the two that Alderman Taylor referenced, the, the garage door at the, or the, uh, the vent opening a- at the wash bay. We, we did have a, a different type of door operator actually called out and specified. Uh, contractor bid it that way, but then when they came back, um, there's been, uh, some discussion about the way that that door operator was going to work. So we, we changed the, the actual operator and ended up, uh, cut, a- a- as Adam said, cutting a new hole through basically the, the precast roof. So I don't know that that is, um, uh, uh, an error on the architect's part. Um, the other one about some ductwork in front of the windows, um, we don't, we don't dimension those things on our drawings. And yeah, if we're gonna point fingers anywhere, it, that was a, a team, uh, probably a lack of coordination. Uh, contractor hung the ductwork. Um, the window openings weren't yet cut. They were marked, uh, on the outside of the building, but that's one of those where it, um, a- a- as Kellen mentioned, over the course of a project, there are some, um, some things that come up and bite you. Um, if, if, if I could, uh, I'd, I'd like to just go back just a little bit. And, um, to Alderman Taylor's point, that the taxpayers are really not paying for these mistakes or, or errors as, as you would call them. Um, we did a, uh, we did a little fact-finding. We, we talked with Aaron, uh, Adam and Thad, and we could sense that there was a little bit of consternation about some of the project contingencies and what's getting called change orders. And on a project of this size, we would expect to have, uh, at most, two or three percent of a total project cost, which is ten million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Right now, you're tracking, uh, about one point four percent, uh, of, of project, um, I'm gonna say contingency or, or changes. There is a healthy contingency left in the project, and Kellen can speak to that a little bit, about dollars that, assuming in the next month or so, as we wrap this project up, um, there, there's a significant amount of money that will be basically returned or, I, I, I'm not sure how the, how the money gets exchanged. It'll go from one pocket back into the other pocket. So I, I, I guess I take issue with, um, having the architect blamed for mistakes on the drawings.
Well, I guess, uh, uh, my point is that, uh, this is a pretty straightforward building. This isn't a complex building like, uh, a school or a power plant, um, or some sort of a utility. It's pretty straightforward and, uh, it's, uh, windows marked on the outside and the guy hanging the fence, but doesn't know it's on the inside. To me, that's pretty, pretty straightforward. And, you know, taxpayers do eat these costs. It comes back to us. Yeah, it's all, it's all borrowed money. And I had a question on the, on the door trim. Uh, what was the issue? Why wasn't that trimmed out in the first place?
When we first, um, uh, when, when our team with the, uh, uh, the owner group, when we first went through the budgeting process and the bidding process, it was a value engineering item that, um, uh, Paul Reader is no longer with Myron, he retired, but did a yeoman's job of working, um, with the city and with our group and has done projects in precast concrete where owners have decided that, yeah, that's a, that's an okay finish. Um, when, when you cut the openings for what I'm gonna call man doors or service doors, you're, you're basically cutting the concrete and you end up with an exposed edge. Um, after we got the, the, the openings cut, um, one of the door frames set in place and not anchored yet, it was just a, a, a matter of going back and looking and saying, you know, maybe this just wasn't the right idea to take, uh, whatever value that was. And, and I, I could, Kellen could probably find it in Paul's notes at that time, but, um, I'm gonna say it was a, a budget number of like fifteen thousand dollars, uh, that, that we took out to help make the project viable. And then as we took a look at it and thought, gosh, this just isn't turning out quite the way you're, you're gonna end up with rubbed concrete and a painted surface on it. So we did make the decision to go back and basically had to trim back in. So was it smart at the first time to take it out? The project in budget, um, you, you had very successful, uh, uh, bid numbers. Uh, project came in very well in the bidding climate. And at that point then, in your contingency that was built into the project, we put it back in and you basically bought it. You, you, you took it out one time and you put it back in.
Okay. Okay. But back to the, the heat and ductwork, I think that's, uh, pretty straightforward. And, uh, I didn't think it should fall on our shoulders. And, um, uh, it's, it's a pretty simple building. I toured it the other day. It's not complex like a school or a, uh, power plant. And, uh, I think that some, sometimes, uh, besides the, the change orders, uh, I think sometimes that the contractors or the architects should, should, uh, absorb those costs, uh, for oversight. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I think Mark did. I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Kellen and Mark for, uh, coming today and explaining this. I thought you did an excellent job. Um, two weeks ago, we voted on this. It was discussed in detail and the vote was seven to zero. We had one member absent. Um, Adam explained very clearly about the trim and that, uh, the reason we went back, adding back the trim. So, um, I appreciate it, especially the point, um, that, uh, Mark, that you made about the contingency that we've been staying on budget and we've, uh, haven't even exceeded one point four percent. So, uh, I think you guys are doing a great job. You're keeping your eyes on the ball and the project is turning out better than, uh, than I anticipated. So, great job.
Mayor, I would like to, uh, separate the, the items here and the heating event and the ductwork. I don't wanna vote for those items, so I would like to, uh, have that separated from the vote.
I, it's a single change order. I don't know that we can separate them out. Can we, Pam? Still here? I don't see, see you, Pam.
I think he can, but he needed to have the specifics and he doesn't appear to have that.
I do have the speci- I do have the specifics.
You have the dollar amounts?
Yep. Vent work, vent ductwork, four thousand seventy-three dollars and Adam was a fifty-nine cents.
Uh, I'm going to rule that you can't separate things out on that change order. It's a single item. Separating multiple items to vote on them separately is one thing, but this is a change order. So, you could send it back if you wanted to.
I'd also like to say, in Public Works, we're just voting to forward to the council. It doesn't mean anything about this vote here, so. Uh, and I toured the facility to look at these changes this last week. And, um, like, again, I don't think the taxpayers should have to absorb it. Thank you.
Sure.
Eric?
Yes.
As, uh, Mark indicated, the taxpayers are not absorbing this, that it is part of the contingency and that we are on budget. So I don't think that, that's a fair statement. But let's vote.
You know, but I would like council members to stand on their own and take care of their own, uh, things. And all they do is bring back the hatchet and try to hack on other people's stuff. And I think that's really, uh, uh, pretty simplified and pretty crude, that you can't have your own ideas. These are dollar amounts. Ultimately, the taxpayer is paying for, it's part of the ten million, eleven million dollar borrowing package. And that's who's paying for it. Uh, Myron or Grease are, are paying for this. We're paying for it. So however you wanna spend that, that's fine, but it's all taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, let's move forward. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Oh.
Alderman Sevenik?
Yes, hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Motion carries seven-one.
Item four is a payment. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Excuse me. I will make the, um, motion to, uh, for the council to accept the payment for Myron Construction Company, Inc., for the Public Works Facility Con- Facility Construction Project in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and one cent. That'll be payment number eight.
I'll second that, but it's six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, not six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenik?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for November thirteenth through December third. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of November thirteenth through December third, twenty-twenty, in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
I'll second.
The motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenik?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operator, the, uh, beverage operators license applications for the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated December seventh, twenty-twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Was that you, Randy? Or who was that?
That was Tom.
Tom.
It was Tom? Okay. Okay. Seeing no discussion, if we get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Alderman Sevenik?
Hi.
Alderman Langdon?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Rappella?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item three is a revocation of a licensing agreement with Valley Marine Mart. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before I make a motion, I just want to take a second to explain why this is on the agenda this evening. And that is because there's an ongoing issue, not ongoing, but recurring issue with, um, the owner of Valley Marine Mart parking boats beyond his lease space. And I frequently get calls about this because I'm the alderman for that district. And after, uh, all these years, I have finally figured out, uh, who I need to talk to at the city level to address this. And so, uh, it was requested that I put this on the agenda this evening so that we can, uh, discuss of what we can do about this because it does recur, uh, frequently. And so, uh, I have a motion prepared. And the motion reads like this. Uh, I move to revoke the license agreement with Valley Marine that can be reinstated with the additional provision of escalating fines in the event of other breaches with a five-day notice to cure the breach, a five-hundred-dollar fine for the, uh, first breach if it's not cured after five days, a one-thousand-dollar fine for the second breach, and a two-thousand-dollar fine for the third breach, and final revocation for the fourth breach.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Sir, discussion? Did you want to explain anymore? Alderman Nichols?
I just, I have a question for Attorney Captain and, um, uh, Attorney Captain. There was a, let's see, we have a copy of the notice of default sent on October twenty-second. And did we ever receive follow-up regarding this notice of default?
No.
And how did, how was the notice of default sent?
I know it was mailed. I don't recall. There were actually two notices that went out. They both were mailed, but in addition to that, my recollection is one of them might have also been emailed.
Okay, thank you.
I'd have to check.
Thank you for that. And, uh, I know that I drove by this evening before, uh, the meeting. And yes, things are, uh, in accordance with the license agreement right now, but they haven't been since this, uh, notice of default was sent. And Director Schrader, um, you had notified Mr. Bowdway about tonight's meeting, correct?
Yes, I did, uh, speak with Mr. Bowdway this morning. And I know there is caller three. I'm not sure if that is the Bowdways, uh, but did advise them if they wanted to listen in, that would, that'd be great.
Thank you. I, I'll listen to what other people have to say now.
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, okay, this notice was sent out. Alderman Nichols said she went and visited and it was in compliance, but who on the city level goes out to check after a notice is sent out like this? And then with her motion, who is going to make that call if, um, say after five, six days as was in that motion? Um, who makes that call? That, uh, that fine goes into place. Is it the city attorney eventually or what? I guess I'd like to see some, you know, some.
Attorney Captain, do you have a comment?
Or something sent to us to, to get a better understanding.
Um, if, if something comes to our, or at least my attention, if there's a written agreement between the city and a party, and then, um, we check on whatever the complaint is, if there's a default, then I just automatically write to the party to let them know that there's a default. And we obviously expect that the default will be cured. And in some circumstances, when that happens, uh, default is cured. If it's not cured, then I just look to whomever the department is that is generally working with that particular party or that contract. Uh, in this case, it's community development. And so, somebody does, uh, site inspection. And then if there is further action to be taken, it just depends on what kind of a contract it is. and then if there is further action to be taken, it just depends on what kind of a contract it is. Uh, in this particular case, we had Alderman Nichols inquiring about it. So then it, it's put on an agenda if an alderman is willing to, uh, make a recommendation to take some action on that, uh, agreement or, you know, whether it be a license or a lease or any other kind of a, a contract that the city has with some party.
And Alderman Sevigny, this is Director Schrader. I just wanna let you know that I did personally, uh, check the property last Thursday, um, because if, if it was in compliance, I probably would have recommended this not be placed on the agenda. Um, so before the agenda was finalized, just so you know, I did, I did personally go out there last Thursday.
Good, and I appreciate that. And that's, to me, is the solution. Um, that, you know, I know that our staff is busy, but we are still Mayberry here and picking up a phone and, um, using other types of communication, whether that be through email or, or the letter is really the first approach before we get too hard-nosed, I guess. Because it's happened multiple times according to Alderman Nichols that maybe we had to be tougher or something and I'll respect that, but let's, let's take like our professional police officers approach, you know, let's, let's find a solution first before we start, you know, uh, issuing citations. If it's felt that, that it's intentional or something, then yeah, then what, then this motion is good. So let's have a proactive approach first before anything else. Thank you. But I will support this.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, was there a certified letter sent out, uh, more of a formal type of, so we get a response?
It was mailed, like we do all other notices, like they get their tax bill.
Okay, but it wasn't a certified mail?
Nope.
Thank you.
There's an additional cost to that and, um, I've never experienced any difficulties with people receiving things by US mail, just regular mail.
And I guess to clarify Alderman Nichols' comments, this has been going on since I was alderman in that district. I had gotten complaints about the same problem. So this is something that Mr. Bowdway's been aware of for a number of years as well. Um, I think it's time that we do, um, state that this is the area and he needs to stay within that area. Alderman Nichols, did you have something else?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say that this is really an ongoing issue for the neighborhood. Um, and I've been here for almost eight years and have, you know, had to deal with this multiple times a year and, um, there's an agreement here. And so I, it's completely fair to expect, um, the parties in the agreement to honor their agreement. And it does provide opportunity for Mr. Bowdway to, uh, come back into compliance without having to pay a penalty for that. Each time, he has five days to cure that non-compliance. And so I think it strikes the balance between, um, you know, being proactive, but yet having some teeth in the agreement to make it enforceable.
Go ahead, Stan.
Thank you. Um, and you know, I've heard before, five days is a five business days. Well, that's why I wanna see some kind of document, uh, so that this is, uh, done professionally so that it doesn't end up being a court situation. So I'll, I'll agree to this, but let's, let's create this policy so that it's workable.
Can you create a memo that goes along with it just to explain it a little further? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, uh, I will be voting for Becky's, uh, motion. Um, this guy, this guy hasn't been stupid because the, the city hall hasn't done nothing. But say to him, Mr. Bowdway, you're out of compliance, you're putting boats too far out and nothing's been done. This guy's not stupid. So hopefully now with Alderman Nichols' motion, that he becomes unstupid. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item four is a change of agent for Walgreens. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Well, I wasn't gonna make a mirror. I was, uh, just getting ready to. But I can make, uh, I'll approve the, the change order for Walgreens, uh, number 03851.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? I think we need a roll call for this. If we could have a roll call?
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item L is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is ordinance 10. Is there a motion? Where did Stan go?
Yeah, I was trying to bring it up, so.
Well, there you are. All of a sudden I couldn't see your face. For some reason, you moved.
Okay. Well, anyways, uh, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for, uh, O10 dash 20 ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances for the outdoor restaurant service.
There are second. A motion and a second by Alderman Tom Gotti. Is there a discussion?
I would like to say something.
Sure.
First, I'd like to thank Bill and Joy for coming forward and giving their viewpoints. I was a little put back by the letter that came in from Ann from Empress. Since they have three storefronts, how much seating does one person need? So obviously, we're doing a good job down there.
Alderman Taylor?
No, I'm first up, so I got my mic on the vault.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item always public comments on any matter that was on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me. That Sanders' mic is on, Mayor.
Oh.
Real quick, Sandra DeBilde Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just wanted to comment quickly on the, uh, default notice. Uh, first of all, I think it's very important when a notice such as this goes out, that this certified, it's roughly about a dollar eighty. Uh, that's not an extreme cost to the city. And then you have proof with the return received, that they did receive it. Anytime you are doing such a, a notice such as that, it's important to have proof that they received it. And then email doesn't work and just regular mail does not work. Um, secondly, I just wanted to comment also that this reflects another big fault in our enforcement, code enforcement, that it's on a complaint basis. If Alderman Nichols would not have brought this up, it would have been ongoing. There are other, uh, facilities, businesses throughout the community that need to have attention and that everything is on complaint basis. I brought this up at the budget hearing also with code enforcement. Something needs to be done. Protocol has to be set that we aren't waiting before something is done, especially in instances such as this one where this has been an ongoing issue for years. Thank you.
Okay, see, Bill, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Alderman Stan Sevigny for making these changes to the ordinance, Title VII, Chapter 8. Um, I think it will be a very positive thing for Manasha and, um, based on, you know, some of the views that we had stated and, uh, closing that loophole that existed. So thank you very much, Dan.
Okay, I don't think there are any other members of the public if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
You're good. Thank you.